rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Miriam Avedamos is excused. Councilmember Mark Joseph.
Here.
Councilmember Pierre Washington.
Here.
Vice Mayor David Oro.
Here.
Mayor Leon Garcia.
Here.
Thank you. Well, I just can't help but comment, this is a very exciting evening. Great news for all of us. Moving on, proclamations and presentation. Declaration of Results of the General Municipal Election for November 5th, 2024. It's in the packet. The, uh, was presented by John Suter. Are there any questions? Any discussion needed on it?
Mayor Garcia, I just wanted to note that we did receive the certified election results this afternoon, which I have printed and left at the dais for you. In the packet was our last, uh, the last ones that we had received. There is no change in the result of the election between what was published and, um, the certified results that you have before you.
Well, thank you. That's the, uh, council members. That's the November 5th, 2024 general election, Napa County Election Division. Final certified results. Well, just where we're working from. All right, very good. If there are no, uh, questions or discussion needed on it, there is a resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution, accepting the results of the November 5th, 2024 General Municipal Election for Mayor and City Council.
I'll second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mark Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Pierre Washington.
Yes.
Vice Mayor David Oro.
Yes.
Mayor Leon Garcia.
Yes. Thank you, council. Well, that has completed our work for this part of the evening. Short, brief, uh, that took less time than I thought. No, actually, it's a congratulations. This is a very honorable thing we do all the time. It's, it's very exciting and very meaningful to all of us. So I'm glad we were able to do it. At this point, the current council will adjourn from the dais and we will proceed, uh, with the new, um, swearing out of the new council. Thank you. So at this point, we adjourn for the disbursement of the evening. All right.
Are we exiting someplace, Jason? Because I wanted to say congratulations.
All right.
We're just, we're just gonna hang out. Okay, there we go. Okay. You've done this before.
This might come again.
The front?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia.
If you would raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Pierre Washington, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And I will well, well, and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties that in which I am about to enter.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting for December 3rd, 2024. Uh, we've already did the pledge of allegiance, so we won't do that again tonight. Um, I'd like to invite Ms. Melissa Lamatina to the podium, please.
If you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Melissa Lamatina, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear tr- true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We will have moments for, for pictures with the family and stuff like that as well. Do you want to do that now? Okay, so. So now, Melissa, you can come join us in the dais. Um, and I didn't take a photo op with my family, so I'm gonna take one real quick. My crew, come on up, please. At this time, I'd like to call or invite Mr. Brando Cruz to the podium, please.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Brando Cruz, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
I will well faithfully and discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Brando, I'm gonna have you and your family take a photo op, and then the entire council will come up and take a photo op, the new council. At this time, I'd like to ask Madam, uh, City Clerk to take our new roll call.
I will.
Councilmember Brando Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Melissa Lamatina.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Joseph.
Still here.
Vice Mayor David Oro.
Not going anywhere.
And Mayor Pierre Washington.
Here. Thank you, Melissa. Uh, we did not have closed session this evening prior to, uh, this meeting. Uh, we will, however, have a closed session, uh, after the conclusion of this meeting today. Um, at this point, I'd like to, um, open, uh, public comment, uh, for items not on our agenda today.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is a pleasure to be here with you. My name is Belia Ramos. I serve as your county supervisor. And, um, it's, uh, very nostalgic for me to be here at your oath ceremony, as I remember, believe it was December 7th of 2010, when Councilmember Joseph and myself were sworn into this council, um, and having this experience that you are. So I look forward to, uh, working with all of you, the new council members, uh, with our newly constituted mayor, Pierre, Pierre Washington. Um, but I wanted to take this opportunity and public comment, uh, to recognize our outgoing mayor. And, um, it is, it is really, um, historic when you think that a city has had one elected mayor. I mean, that's, that's what we've had. One elected mayor. And Mayor Garcia has served this community, uh, with distinction. Uh, we had the opportunity to honor him and recognize his service earlier today at the Board of Supervisors. And I just, I, I want to say, as a colleague, having sat here with you, um, and worked with you, uh, at the county level, I appreciate, um, your steadfast commitment, because that's what it has been. Steadfast commitment to the city of American Canyon, its residents, and to really being, uh, that person that shines a light on all the good things that American Canyon has to offer. And so I just want to, as, as you exit the door, um, for your, your final meeting, I just want to say with tremendous gratitude, uh, on behalf of everyone here in American Canyon, thank you for all your service.
Thank you, Supervisor Belia, and thank you, Leon. I got you on retainer. Anyone else for public comment?
I'd just like to thank, uh, the mayor and, uh, and welcome the new city council. Uh, it, it looks like it's gonna be a good year. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran.
Good evening, Mayor Washington. Councilmembers. Uh, I'm Terrence McGrath. I'm the, uh, developer, owner of Watson Ranch in the Ruins. And, uh, I want to echo Supervisor Ramos's comments about mayor, outgoing Mayor Garcia. He's been the mayor the entire time I've been working on this project, uh, since, or councilmember slash mayor, since 2004. And so it's a little strange for me to be here tonight and not see him sitting behind the, the dais. First of all, I want to congratulate both Mayor Washington and Councilmember Oro on the race you ran. I think it's incredibly impressive. One, the number of votes that you, you both got in this process, and also the way you've both conducted yourself throughout the campaign. I think it really is a, um, powerful message, um, in the world we live in today, in that it was, uh, it was well done, it was clean. And I think it's interesting to have both you sitting there with such strong backing from the community. So congratulations on that. Like Mark said, and, uh, Councilmember Joseph said, and Councilmember Oro said, still here, I'm not going anywhere. Um, and then I also wanted to welcome Councilmember Lamatina. I look forward to meeting you and getting to know you better. Councilmember Cruz, um, we've met a few times, gotten to know each other a little bit. I look forward to getting to know you a lot better. Um, and I just am really looking forward to 2025. We've accomplished a lot in the last couple of years, and I look forward to sitting here with a new council and all the things that are in front of us, and always appreciate you serving. It's what makes this country great. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Wow, what a group! Several months ago, I addressed our Seroptimus meeting because I was upset that I didn't see any women running for the council. I could not fathom an all-male council when we have such great female leadership here. So I am just so happy to see Melissa sitting over there and representing not only the city, but all of us who have come to love her so much. So I'm looking forward to a really, really great council with all of you working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Janelle Selig with the Parks Foundation, and I wanted to say a couple words. I know Leon just stepped out, but, um, Leon was involved with our board, our original board directors, which started, uh, nearly 10 years ago. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and since then, he's served as an ex officio board member since he's an elected. He doesn't have a vote on our board, but he still shows up to board meetings and makes meaningful contributions. So, oh, so with so much exciting transition, we recently held a board meeting in which we were actually able to vote him in as an actual voting board member. So with new doors opening, comes new doors opening for the mayor, so we're excited to have him on board with us as finally a voting board member, um, in, um, in his new role in retired. I also want to take a moment and welcome our new mayor and council members. Look forward to working with you. And finally, um, shameless plug for the Rain Dirt Run this weekend. There's no better way to celebrate all this exciting, um, new, um, blood and new folks involved with our city than coming and joining the Rain Dirt Run. 5K, 10K starts at 9:00 AM at the Wetlands. You can register at acparks.org. All are welcome. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Janelle.
Do we have any, um, anybody online?
I do have one hand raised online. Go ahead, Justin.
Well, Merry Christmas. Yeah, I'm very, I'm very happy. My neighbor, Melissa, she, I remember the time, she a very good worker at Novay Office. I'm very proud of her. I wanted to make a little bit comment on our, our old mayor. Thank you for sitting on the table. We will be miss him. And he great mayor for two years. Thank you so much. Um, my other comment, uh, to want to see, um, I hope we, hopefully we'll get new house and rest the carrot on more. It's pretty long time. I need new seat. I want, I want to see new sidewalk. Um, there's no sidewalk over there, um, by my house. Um, I was so patient, I do want to see the new house built. Thank you so much. And Melissa, good luck. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Justin. Is there anyone else?
There are no other hands raised.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience? Um, if there's no one else for public comment, I'd like to close public comment at this time and return to the council for any recommendation for agenda changes. And if there are no agenda changes, um, I will accept the motion, uh, to accept a consent calendar. So moved.
Second.
You guys are quick.
Motion's in second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Sorry, just, sorry, just one moment. I'm having some, uh, some... Here we go. David? Alrighty. Okay, sorry about that. Uh, Councilmember Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Oro.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Oops.
Oops, sorry. That's the first one.
Some things just never change.
Mayor Washington.
Yes.
Already.
That's gonna take months to wear down.
The first vote.
Everything was going so well.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, Madam Clerk. Public hearing. Okay, next is public hearing, item number five, an ordinance modifying certain compensation provisions, uh, for members of the city council.
Uh, Mayor Pub, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, the matter before you implement state legislation concerning compensation for members of the council. Uh, the effective date of the proposed increase is contingent upon the certification of the first election results, consistent with the provisions of Government Code Section 36516.5. Accordingly, the ordinance before you effect, the ordinance before you would make effective the terms of this state legislation, which provides for a salary, excuse me, a stipend $950 a month for council members, effective December 7, 2024. The proposed ordinance also amends provisions of the existing salary ordinance to eliminate compensation when council members were, uh, considering, uh, areas concerning water because of the former Water Service area of the American Canyon County Water District. Accordingly, the proposed ordinance before you is recommended for approval as implementing state law affecting the first pay period for the city of December 7, 2024. There are questions? There are questions, certainly respond.
Any questions from council? Hearing none. I guess I could open this to open, open.
Public hearing.
Public comment. Any public comment on item number four? Item number five?
I have no speaker cards and no hands raised online.
Okay.
I don't think it's ever, I'm sorry, I'm Joan Bennett. I don't think it's ever really been known how little the city council in American Canyon has been, their stipend, or whatever it is you want to call it. They're way below every other entity, every other city. And this is a well-deserved, I'd like to see it even bigger. But it's well-deserved that there's an increase, and I hope that there will be more. Because you, everybody in the city has not been there to make, well, I don't think most of them have been there to make money. Most of them have been there to, you know, do something well and good for their city. But really, the compensation is very low and it should be higher. And I'm glad to see an increase.
Thank you for your comment, Joan. Any other comments?
Yes, good evening, Beth Marcus. I just want to echo Joan. I mean, we sit here at all the meetings and watch all the things that you have to, to know about, to read about. I agree with you, Joan, for what you get paid is, it's peanuts, in my opinion. Because there's a lot that you have to decide, and where you are representing us. And I thank you all for, for what you do. God love you. I would never want to be in your place. That's why I sit here. But thank you for everything you do. And like I say, you need, I agree with Joan, you need more money because you do a lot of work for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
No other comments from inside? How about online?
I have no hands. Oh, Justin raised his hand. Hold on just a moment. Justin, go ahead.
This is for drinking water. Does, is that, is on ginger? I don't know. I see something in the mail the other day. Another city is sending a letter about Jerry for 2025. I don't know what we're going to do. That's a water. That's my question.
Justin, this item that we're talking about right now is council compensation. It's item five on the agenda. This is not a water item?
Although I think we just sent out a notice talking about our water rates in the mail, so that might have been the connection. And there is reference to the water board compensation. So there are dots here that can connect.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Justin. Any other, anyone else online?
There are, there are no hands raised online.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If there's no other public comment, I'd like to close this public comment and return to the council for any additional statements or questions. And if there are no statements or questions, I will accept the motion to accept item number five.
If there's no comments, okay, great. Well, I'll make a quick comment. Yeah, I know it was pittance. You do this for the love of your heart. But it's also not peanuts. It's a peanut, singular. So we're glad to see this happen. And when I pushed this through, I wanted to see more people have the opportunity to do this and hoping that a little bit more compensation would invite more people to run for council. So I'm very happy to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2024. Next in order, an ordinance of the city council, the City of American Canyon, to modifying the compensation of the members of the city council.
I second that motion.
Okay, there's been a second on the motion. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brando Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Oro?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
I'm gonna say yes, but I just wanted to also thank Joan and Beth for their statements and my comrade here, David, for his comments. I think we all do this because we really care. We care about the community. And you don't even have to pay us anything. I think we would do it. But it's not a, a good recruiting tool not to have that. So, so I do appreciate the increase. But again, like I said, we don't do it because of the money. We do it because we love the city. And my answer is yes.
Next item. Moving forward for the next business, business item will be number six, selecting of the vice mayor and city council committee appointments for 2025. Would you be leading that, Jason? Mr. Holly?
Your name's on the staff report.
Okay. Well, so, so let's start with the nomination for mayor, for the vice mayor first.
Considering that I'm the vice mayor, and I got two new council members that have a lot to get to, and there's actually a mayor, a new mayor, I'd like to nominate Mark Joseph as vice mayor.
I'll second that. I needed somebody with some seasoned background helping me out back here. And he's pretty seasoned.
As long as I'm not seedy, I appreciate that.
Okay, so we have Mark and.
So we have a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Oro?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for your support.
And I guess now we'll move to the council committee appointments.
Yes, Mayor, I'm going to take this other part. I had to give you something to do. So before you and in your packet is a list of council committee appointments to a variety of committees, both internal and outside the organization. In years past, we've generally had council members stay on their assigned committees. Sometimes it can take a while to get used to the information and participate in these bodies. And it's generally, folks have kind of stayed in their areas with the new folks that we have on council and the changes we have. We expected quite a bit of changes. So the format that you have in front of you is done in strike through. And so what this is, is a list of the 2024 appointments with strike throughs of names for folks who are no longer on the council. There are a couple of subcommittees that staff doesn't think need to exist anymore. And we've taken the liberty of going ahead and striking those out as well. Councils could certainly reinstate them and make the appointments. And I should have started by saying, you're free to generally appoint whoever you want to these bodies. There are a number of exceptions to that rule, although some of the bodies that council members serve on outside the organization require certain members of the council. Most notably, the mayor, for example, is required to be on Napa Valley Transportation and, and other bodies. So some of them, and we've noted those requirements where they exist. But otherwise, you're free to, to appoint those. The Finance Committee is another exception internally, and that is required to be both the mayor and the vice mayor. But other than that, as you can see, there's quite a list of both standing and ad hoc internal committees. There's jurisdictional two-by-two committees. Maybe what I'll do is just take a moment for the public to kind of underscore the differences between some of these responsibilities. So the first set of columns noted the city council standing committee and ad hoc subcommittee. These are bodies that are two members of the council. Some of them are standing committees. And they, the Brown Act applies, public comment, public noticing of those standing committees apply. And really primarily, the only one of those we have is the Finance Subcommittee. There's a standing committee. The rest of these are ad hoc, which means as the need arises, then staff will convene the, the subcommittee of the council members to provide input on whatever the particular issue might be. The, the next grouping is called, what we characterize as multi-jurisdictional two-by-two committees. So these are committees that we have between American Canyon and generally some other government body. For example, there's a committee with Napa County. There's a committee with Napa Valley Unified School District. TBID, the Tourism Business Improvement District, is another example of a jurisdictional committee, although there's only one appointee to, to that body. And then the American Canyon Fire Protection District is actually all five council members sit on that board. So these are assignments outside of the, the city generally, outside of our, outside of our purview. And some of them are ad hoc, some of them are standing committees. And I'll actually note, on the TBID Local Governing Committee, recently, that body actually changed its meeting schedule, and we meet only twice a year now. We don't meet bimonthly. It's an update. We'll have to, to make an adjustment there. And tomorrow's our next meeting, I think, actually. Then this next category of, of what is characterized as countywide boards, commissions, and committees. These are bodies that one or two representatives from the council go sit on an entire board or an entire commission. And so Flood District, Local Agency Formation Commission, Resource Conservation District, Climate Action Committee, Waste Management Authority, Napa Valley Transportation. There's a, a number of these bodies. A couple of them are somewhat unique. For example, the Napa County City Selection Committee is made up of all of the mayors in the county, so that one has to be the mayor's. But there are others that don't have that same sort of requirement. So again, you'll see the names on here and the strikers are individuals no longer on the council.
Mr. Holly, I didn't see where the mayor, is it just NVTA and the mayor's, the city select committee that the mayor has to be a part of, or is there another one?
You make an excellent point, Councilmember Oro. Staff has designated this in our brains. We know which ones are which. We actually haven't designated them on the sheet here. So it is Napa, it's the Flood District, NVTA, Waste Management Authority, City Select Committee, and Finance Subcommittee is mayor and vice mayor. And maybe Teresa can help me if I've missed one, but I think those are the, those are the ones that require the mayor. So I'll restate that. Napa County Flood District is the mayor. Napa Valley Waste Management Authority is the mayor. NVTA is the mayor on one other. And Napa County City Select Committee is the mayor, and the Finance City Subcommittee is mayor and vice mayor. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, okay. Open the discussion? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
I was just going to cover the last couple of these. There's a couple of other items on here. Regional agencies, so these are bodies that members from American Canyon participate regionally. Association of Bay Area Governments, General Assembly, the Executive Board. There's also North Bay Water Reuse Authority and the North Bay Watershed Association. So these are all, these are all bodies that representatives from American Canyon are appointed to.
Thank you, Mr. Holly. And you have some questions regarding, it's Councilmember Oro?
Well, I was going to suggest a way forward, actually, is all I was going to do. Because for the new council members, this is a bit of a free-for-all, with some established guidelines. I think Jason said it best when, you know, like, serve what you can, like, keep what you can unless you have a change. The last change that was made that was significant, I took over the Napa Valley Tourism Corporation as well as TBID for Mark Joseph, and that was out of request. And so for me, I'm just going to throw this out there, and I guess we could probably clean this up a little bit. I'm only asking for one change, and that is for somebody to cover for me on, is it, is, I think that's a countywide, it's called the Napa County Watershed Information Center and Conservancy, or WIC. I took over for that for Mayor Washington. This one is challenging for me from just a personal schedule. I will say, though, that they are reevaluating the WIC. It may go away. So if it goes away, join that committee, and you don't have to attend. So, but otherwise, for me, I'm generally good with the assignments to where I'm the first appointee, which right now is TBID, Napa Valley Tourism Corporation, ABAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments, and I think that's it. Maybe there's something else here as well.
So for you, the WIC is the only one that you?
Yeah, the, the WIC is the only one I, I would get out of. And then if there's something laying around afterwards, I might consider it, depending on schedules and stuff like that. Oh, I did have one other question, Mr. Holly. I, I do believe, and Supervisor Ramos is in there, she's on LAFCO. I do believe LAFCO pays too, doesn't it? It does.
We have an expert in the audience. She might help us answer some questions. I think she also has some input on the, the appointments for ABAG, which we may, may have misconstrued slightly.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
So on the Association of Bay Area Governments, the general assembly designee is either the mayor or as designated by the council, which has been historically council member Oro. For the executive committee, while Mayor Garcia did serve for many years in that capacity, that was through an appointment through the city select. So your process would be to nominate a name to the city select committee for consideration, but the mayors will get to determine who my carpool buddy will be for the next four years. LAFCO is a paid position at the stipend of $150. Don't spend it all in one place. That also is a city select process. And right now, the alternate for the Napa and Southern County region is an alternate city member to LAFCO, but participation and attendance is required. Any other questions, Mr. City Manager?
No, I appreciate the expertise.
And since I'm here, happy birthday.
Thank you.
And for me, I want to, I'd like to, to inherit all the things that Mayor Leon Garcia have. And I'd like to add the RCD, because I've, I've been part of that for some time now. So I'd like to continue to do that. Love to be your carpool partner as well, Supervisor Bellia. But it's something that you said that you wanted to get on.
I, I was just trying to clarify that, you know. And I think we should discuss this as council. LAFCO is a, at times, complicated and challenging thing. And I know, and I did speak to Councilmember Joseph briefly during this. And if I, if I may speak for you, Councilmember Joseph, he was a little tapped out on committees. If you don't want LAFCO, I'll take LAFCO just out of, out of experience, probably. So, I mean, I'm sure you guys can get it, but, you know, I've been watching LAFCO for a while.
Okay, very good.
Any objections?
No.
Question about the LAFCO, though. Is it a, is it the, the mid-part of that term for that LAFCO position? So in two years, we would have to go back for the four-year LAFCO position?
I'll see if I get this right. We have our expert in the audience who will correct me. So LAFCO is extraordinarily unique in how those appointments go. In this case, it is also the city select committee that makes the appointments to LAFCO. And the way that the Napa LAFCO is set up is sort of a, an up-valley, down-valley, south-valley sort of configuration. So the up-valley cities have representative, and the Napa and American Canyon have two members appointed by the city select committee to LAFCO. One is a primary, one is an alternate. And so there's always either a Napa or an American Canyon representative as the primary, and the other one is the alternate. And they flip back and forth. I think they're four-year terms, if my memory is right. But maybe she will have some additional expertise for us tonight.
Through the mayor, it's a four-year appointment, and they, and they flip every two years to go back and forth. But again, because attendance is required, you're actually allowed to speak. It's the oddest thing. It's, it's LAFCO and, and the crazy rules of Hertzberg-Knox and whoever that other guy is, Mr. Ross. And you are only excluded from closed sessions. So if there is an item, and even though you sit in the alternate seat, like, it will be one of the five of you. It will be that you will be seated there. You still get to participate fully in the discussion. You still get to participate fully in the discussion, state your opinions, ask your questions. You simply don't have a vote unless the primary person is not able to vote. And if that primary person is not able to attend a closed session, you get into that session as well.
Okay.
It's goofy.
I mean, I support the fact that if you want to get on it, I know that's something that you're passionate about, something that we could probably value.
I'm just filling a gap. Yeah, so I'm happy to do it. And that was just a brief discussion with Councilmember Joseph. Unless there are new council members that are LAFCO heads and really want to dive into it. But that meeting is, when are those meetings?
On the Mondays.
Monday afternoon.
Yep, Monday afternoon.
Bimonthly.
Bimonthly.
First Monday.
First Monday.
Not yesterday.
So I'm fine with David being that part from us, but there's also the second piece that, that, that's a name that you have to give to the city select.
Correct.
And I was going to say, can I at least still have my name put on there for the select committee?
Well, so what the, what the city select, yeah, I suppose it would put the city select committee in a little bit of a weird place for the city council to send two names up to represent American Canyon. Because they would have a probably a hard time justifying whichever of the selections they wanted. In this case, the city select committee really acts in a perfunctory way to bless whoever the recommendation for the American Canyon Council is. Other actions that the city select committee takes is actually from a bigger pool, multiple agencies for MTC, for the ABAG executive. And so there's, there's a little more of a choosing that happens. In this case, they pay great deference to what the American Canyon Council wants as its representative. Whether they be primary or alternate, that's going to flip every two years. So they pay a lot of deference, if we send them two names, I suspect they'll be a little confused by that. Because they won't know how to evaluate, you know, what are, what the, what the choice would be. You know, and I'm not even sure if they would use an interview process or what they would actually use. So, you know, my hunch is they would prefer just one name, and this is one where they sort of just pass that through because they're not necessarily wanting to have a big.
And I think in that case, that it would better serve with Councilman Oro being on that.
And to answer your question, Councilmember Oro, it will be, the term will be for the remainder of the two years. And then it would switch to the primary.
I like the warm-up, thank you. Okay, so the next step would be, it would go to the city select committee sometime soon. And then whenever they put me on, that's, I attend the next meeting for that.
Probably the February meeting, the city select committee won't meet in time for next Monday. And so it would be the, probably the February meeting.
Okay, if there's no other comment from council, I'd like to open it up to public comment, if there's any.
Do we have, do we have assigned all the other ones?
Oh, yeah, I was going to say, I mean, I.
We've got work to do.
It may be easier if we kind of start from the top and go down. Some of them are hardwired, like the Finance Subcommittee, it's going to be yourself and myself. But as we go through, we can either leave it as is, if there's two incumbents and they're happy. Or if there's a vacancy, one of our two new council members might want to jump in and say, "I've always had a hankering for filling the blank," and you'll probably get it.
So what would be easy for you, Mr. Holly, for us to go down the list and just give the name real quick for the city clerk to be able to?
Yeah, I mean, that makes some sense to sort of, you know, from our scribbling perspective. You know, the two things, you know, we felt that the Eco Project Subcommittee was no longer really needed. Being that the projects kind of come to fruition. So just sort of confirming that there's no desire for that Subcommittee. The New Old Drive Two-by-Two Subcommittee has really morphed into the Napa County Two-by-Two Committee. So we don't think there's a need for there to be a new, an internal New Old Drive Two-Person Committee. It's really something with the county, and that's listed down below. So we're not deleting that, it's just sort of duplicative.
So may I suggest that we just go down the list?
Yeah. The next would be the legislative, so Finance Subcommittee is hardwired, Mayor Washington, Vice Mayor Joseph. Public Arts Subcommittee, any changes?
Keep it as-is.
Yeah. Legislative Subcommittee does not require Mayor Garcia, that was just an area of, I guess, interest.
I don't even know what that is.
So we don't actually have a particularly strong legislative platform kind of process. We generally, just because of workload and interest, kind of default to what CalCities recommends. And so if CalCities says that's bad, we write a letter that says that's bad. If they say it's good, we write a letter that says it's good, we don't do much else. In theory, we could expand that and we could have a more robust legislative Subcommittee. And staff would be more active advocating in Sacramento and/or DC on issues. It hasn't been an area of focus for us, because given our size and our resources, it's kind of a futile act. But we didn't want to delete that because, you know, there can be the interest at time to time. Particularly if there was a matter where, you know, maybe the council was kind of split or there was kind of conflicting ideas from CalCities, we'd run it by these two and then probably bring it to the whole council for some direction on whether to support or oppose.
Yeah, Mr. Holly, I fail to acknowledge both Councilmember Cruz and Councilmember Melissa. If they had any questions before we get into going down the chart. Councilmember Lamontina. No questions, Councilmember Cruz.
Mayor Pierre, I'm pretty straightforward with everything, I'm good with going down a list. And for simplistic terms, I'm good to, well, we'll go through each name. So each list, each committee, we just go that, make it easier.
Okay, so yeah, Legislative Subcommittee is two council members. If we see advocacy needs in Sacramento or DC that are, you know, more convoluted than what CalCities is advocating for, we would convene these folks on an ad hoc basis and probably end up in front of council, but maybe not, so.
I'm happy to stay.
I don't think we've convened this Subcommittee in the last seven years, so it's not frequently done.
Yeah, it comes in handy when there's a need for a letter of support or opposition. And you can run it by us to say, "Got any objections?" And we usually say no, and off we go. So, but theoretically, if we did want to be a little more ambitious, this would be the vehicle to pursue that.
Correct.
I would like to be on this Subcommittee.
All right.
Not hearing any objections, I put down ML on my initials in that box. This next is Commission Interview Subcommittee. So at your next council meeting, we're going to be bringing in the topic forward. We have, currently have three citizen advisory commissions. And we expect upwards of sixty or more percent vacancy in those bodies. And so we've solicited interviews, solicited applicants for those bodies. And we'll be starting to do interviews in the first part of January. On your meeting on the seventeenth, you're going to provide us some more direction and framework about how you want to do some of that in January. This Subcommittee in the past has played an integral role in preparing interview questions and kind of framing out how like the minutia of that process should look. So, you know, we've, staff has felt it important, the council felt it was important to have the right kinds of questions and to really, you know, kind of dive into some of the details. And so, you know, we're happy to have this committee, we found some value in it. And there's not any, you know, proposed changes to that, move it forward as-is.
Well, I will remove myself from that, because I'm on that committee.
Okay.
And I'm willing to be part of that Committee as well. If Councilmember Oro would like to be the first appointee, I'd like to be the second appointee.
Okay, any objections to that?
No objection here.
Okay, this next Subcommittee really hasn't been convened in a while. It's the Watson Ranch Subcommittee. At the time, we were working on the development agreement for that project. This committee was heavily involved in that, in that development agreement. We are currently in the process of amending the development agreement. There could be, in theory, the need for this group to get back together. So that we, we didn't feel like we could take it off necessarily, because it was still active in some sense. So that's why we left it on there. If there's any interest in getting rid of the committee, we can do that. If there's an interest in, you know, one or these positions, happen in them.
I'd like to at least nominate one of our new council members to be part of that, so they can get up to speed on what's going on there. And I'd like to be removed from it.
Okay.
I'm more than willing to take one of the position, either first appointee or second, I'm open. Councilmember Melissa, would you like to be with me on that?
Sure.
I'll take first appointee.
I'm, I don't want to be rude, but would it, would there be some merit to having one of the two having been around for a while? So there's some context in knowing what's going on. This is a pretty important project and it can often be a challenge for staff as well as elected. So, you know, I, I wouldn't mind being on there only because since I'm so damn seasoned. I have a lot of history that goes there as well. But, you know, it's not essential, but I do think someone who's been around for a while should be one of the two. I think the idea of having a new person makes some sense, too.
Well, how about having Brando be number one, you number two, and then Melissa be number three alternative?
I'll even take second if Councilmember or Vice Mayor Joseph would like to be the first.
We're, in this kind of arrangement, we're kind of co-equals.
Correct, for Subcommittee is the appointee doesn't, which one doesn't matter.
Yeah, I just want to second that, I do think there should be one member that has some history leading up to that project.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, I have Brando and Mark as the appointees and Melissa as the alternate. Eco Project Subcommittee, striking that. Economic Development Subcommittee, again, not something that we've convened more regularly.
Just for the record, on the Eco Subcommittee, I was on that committee, my name's not on there, just letting you know, the Eco Project Center.
Oh, that was the blank, probably.
Thanks, yeah.
All right, well, we'll correct the record to show that you're on there. The Economic Development Subcommittee, we haven't had a lot.
I'm happy to stay on it. I do think we ought to spend a little more time thinking about economic development. So I would encourage that it continue to exist and happy to be on it.
Yeah, I actually like that committee as well, isn't that part of the chamber, the chamber, that's where they meet?
No, and that's actually, has been an issue in the past. So in the past, the Chamber has convened a committee and at some point in time, we had multiple council members participating in that, which is not the greatest. So, so anyway, that's not part of the Chamber, this is an eternal city. Can make really good looks at some of our economic development policies, that sort of thing.
Okay, then in that case, Councilmember Joseph.
I'm happy to stay on it, if anyone else wants to join me.
I'll join you.
Okay.
Thanks.
So I have Vice Mayor Joseph and Councilmember Lamontina for that one. Community Grant Volunteer Service Award Subcommittee. So this primarily was working on our Gateway Award and our Community Recognition Ball and the policies that we have in place for all of those award programs. So we, this committee did work about three years ago, I want to say. Really hasn't done a lot since that, but it, I can foresee the need for having this body meet again. We had some refinements that we're still continuing to work on. So it's currently Councilmember Oro and Vice Mayor Joseph, and unless there's any changes.
I think that's an easy one to keep, as-is.
Okay, I mentioned before, the New Old Drive Two-by-Two is, is really the Napa County Two-by-Two Committee with a little bit broader.
Mr. Holly, so the County Two-by-Two Committee, is it on here, is it further back?
Yes, it's the next item down.
It's the next item down? Which one, I'm not seeing that.
What used to be the Napa County Airport Industrial Area Two-by-Two is now just the Napa County.
Oh, I see what you did there, because I was on that Airport Industrial Committee meeting and I never met. And I just like to have my name on there and never met. So that is going to be the Two-by-Two Committee now.
Correct, it won't just, I mean, Airport Industrial Area is a little too selective, a little too constrictive.
So I know you sent an email early, remind me again where we are at with that. We were trying to set that up, we were going to set that up. I know the county CEO got an email from us.
Yeah, the county is committed to filling their two spots in this Napa County American Canyon Two-by-Two Subcommittee. They're going to wait until their new board is appointed in January, when they do a similar process for their new board in January. So we won't know who their two, you know, folks are until probably mid-January. But, you know, I told them we would go ahead and appoint R2. And, you know, this is really focused on South County sorts of issues. South County Unincorporated, South County American Canyon, how we're working together, Urban Limit Line, annexations, property tax sharing, development in and around the airport area, both in the unincorporated area and American Canyon. So New Old Drive playing heavily, you know, into that conversation as well as a variety of topics, so.
And you want to stay on there?
I was on the other one, my name is just attached to it right now. So I'm open for this, I feel like I'm getting a heavy workload here, so.
And this has been a near and dear issue to me, so I'm happy to be on there, especially if Councilmember Oro is happy to be off. If that makes sense.
Is that accurate or not?
You know, I'm open to council persuasion and discussion. If you need me on there, I'll be on there. If I don't need to be on there, I trust in Mark.
Those are the last, famous last words, but thank you. And it's a two-by-two, so.
It is, I only have Councilmember.
You know, Mark, let's do it, let's do it.
We'll go in there.
We'll do it.
Take the county by storm.
Wonder Twin powers activate.
We have, moving on, the Napa Valley Unified Two-by-Two. Currently Pierre and Mayor Washington and Vice Mayor Joseph.
Actually, I think we've made some groundwork there, I'd like for us to stay on it together.
I would agree.
We're a pretty good team, we may not be the Wonder Twins, but we're good.
I don't think we get any special rings, but, you know.
So the next one is the TBID Local Governing Committee, the only change we have there is the meetings are twice a year now, not on bimonthly.
Yeah, so, just so everybody knows, if you're going to take TBID, you should be on the Napa Valley Tourism Corporation. If you're going to take Napa Valley Tourism Corporation, you should be on TBID. Since I'm doing both, I'm just going to stay on this one. And I don't think there's an, is, Mark is the alternate for that?
The alternate, but as, for twice a year, the odds are pretty good, you can make two meetings. So I'm happy to be the alternate under the expectation that I don't have to worry about it. So I'm good. And then the Tourism Corporation, you're right, whoever's on the one should be on the other.
And we have that set up that way.
All right. Fire District, we're all on.
Fire District, you don't have a choice, so.
Choice, all five.
Flood Control, you don't have a choice, that's the mayor.
Yep, but there is an alternate there.
Oh, that's true.
Now, I was happy to be the alternate, because Mayor Garcia, I don't think ever missed a meeting, and so it's.
Well, my day job.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You might be called upon.
I was going to say, so, you know, if somebody wants to get their feet wet with flood control, I'm happy to step aside as the alternate.
But know that I will do everything I can to make sure I make all those meetings.
I actually think this is a good assignment for one of our newer council members, because it is an opportunity to start to understand about some pretty big, important things that are happening countywide and meet elected officials from all over the county.
I'll step up for that.
All right. LAFCO, we've kind of already decided that we're going to recommend the city select committee pick Councilmember Oro to the American Canyon spot. Napa County Resource Conservation District has Mayor Washington and Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yeah, I'd like to continue with that.
Yeah, and I'm happy to be the alternate. And I do think it's an alternate.
Yeah, I think it's an alternate, I think we need to slide that name over, it's an alternate.
Otherwise, my attendance has been horrible.
The WIC, Councilmember Oro is currently on the WIC, there is not an alternate.
Yeah, I should give up the WIC.
So is there someone interested? This is the fourth Thursday of the month, and this is another interesting one. You all don't actually make the appointment, we'll send a nice note to the Board of Supervisors and hopefully recommend that they select the representative to the WIC, which.
Did that happen with me? I don't think so.
Probably did.
Oh, it did, and I just never saw it?
Yeah, they don't do interviews or anything, it's just, we send them a note and then the county actually does the appointment. So if there are any of our.
Uh, by the way, the WIC is not meeting monthly. It is meeting.
Quarterly, right?
Quarterly.
Oh, that's.
Update that. Little incentive for our new council members.
Quarterly.
A, and a lot of them get canceled.
Okay.
And it could go away.
And it could go away.
You know, that's even better. Do it, do it.
I'll do it. I feel the pressure.
Thank you, Councilmember.
We do technically need an alternate.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
I have Melissa penciled in as the appointee, um, Councilmember Lamontina.
I'll take the alternate.
And we'll have Councilmember Cruz.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz.
Uh, it's fun and games. We haven't had this many changes in a while.
Yeah. And not even subtle pressure and all that. All good stuff.
Napa County Climate Action Committee, uh, I'd be shocked if Councilmember Joseph.
I would like to stay on there. Plus, it's been brought to our attention. We also need to have an alternate.
Yeah, that's the strangest of requirements. I don't.
Well, it needs a secondary and an alternate?
Yes, so you, we need two people.
I would be an alternate.
All right, all right. Well, that's one box filled.
Yeah.
Uh, we are needing a, a second appointee for. That is literally the only committee that needs a, a first, a second, and an alternate. Nobody, uh, I guess NVTA does that.
Nine AM to eleven thirty. But it's every Friday, or the fourth Friday.
Uh, is there an alternate who, uh, wants to go to the Napa County Climate Action Committee?
Think Mayor Washington wants to be the alternate. We're now looking for that second chair.
Second appointee. Is there someone, oh yeah, is there someone else who wants to be on the, uh, this is nine AM on Friday mornings, the fourth Friday of the month.
Yeah.
I'm sure Mark was willing to carpool.
Rochambeau?
I'm, I'm sure Mark will carpool with you.
Yes.
All right, sign me up.
All right, okay.
All right. You know, the climate is an important thing. This should have been a fought-over assignment.
Okay. Waste Management Authority, you don't have a choice. The mayor, uh, will be doing that.
I don't mind staying the alternate.
Okay.
As long as you have the track record of Leon. Like I told Mark earlier. I'll do my best.
Uh, NVTA, so, uh, Mayor Washington will be on that.
Yep, yes, sir.
I assume Chair Joseph wants to stay chair.
I would advocate that I stay on there as, as I am the Chair of the NVTA.
Is there anyone interested in being the alternate for NVTA?
Alon's here for the alternate.
All right.
Uh, Napa Valley Tourism Corporation, I think we're leaving the same because T bid.
And then Joseph should be the alternate, not the second?
Yeah, I may, already made that note here. Thank you. Uh, City Select Committee, uh, Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember, Mayor Washington. Well, does that one? Uh, Napa County Youth Opportunity Commission. Uh, this meets as needed. I don't get the sense that they meet very frequently, but, um.
I, I'd like to be part of that committee.
Okay, as the appointee?
Yes.
All right. Any takers on the alternate?
I'll jump on that as well.
Okay, awesome. Turn it for that. Uh, Councilmember Oro, are you interested in the Napa Slano Agency on Aging Oversight Board?
As an alternate.
Oh. I guess we need an appointee? How does that work?
So, I'm not sure. It's made by the Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
Currently, I'm the alternate to Liz Alessio.
Okay. I'll check in with them. If, if something else needs to happen, we'll come back to the council.
Yeah, and I don't know if she's gonna keep that position, because she's moving from City Council to Board of Supervisors.
I'll wait for them to tell us they need something different.
Yeah, I, I would like to be on that if possible.
Okay. Well, yeah.
If you want to take my name off and be the alternate and then slide in if Liz comes out, then you can, we can keep that clean right now, yeah?
Yeah, sounds good.
Cool.
You got that, Jason?
Yes. Uh, ABAG Executive Board, that's a City Select Committee appointment.
Can we update that to say City Select Committee up?
I am, I've got that in my notes here.
Yep.
That's a City Select Committee appointment. And do we have?
I think Pierre mentioned he was wanting that?
Yes.
Okay. We will send that communication to the City Select Committee. That one, I don't know, I don't think there's an American Canyon, I think that's a countywide representation on the Executive Board, so. That is a decision-making process. The City Select Committee would deal, although you're one of the five votes on that committee, so. So we'll send that note to them, and then when they have their meeting, if there are other names in the hat, that's how that gets selected.
Sounds good.
Uh, General Assembly, ABAG, is that still something Councilmember Oro, you're interested?
I, I don't mind doing it, but if somebody wants to take it from me, I can give it up.
Okay. That's once a year, yeah?
Yeah. Always the wrong time of the year for me. I'm like.
Okay. So, uh, is there any interest, uh, amongst others, uh, in this, once a year, whenever at the right time?
It's usually on a Friday morning. It's a half-day.
It's in San Francisco. I think that's an important caveat.
Yeah, some, it's, it's mostly in San Francisco. Uh, the last one was in Oakland. It's, you know, they'll serve breakfast, they'll serve lunch. Um, you only have to be there required to be for the business meeting. So that's usually around ten AM, and it lasts for about an hour. And then the rest of it is filled with speakers, um, special guests, and then just general discussion of Bay Area issues.
Okay. It is a good way to, to really broaden your, um, connections, uh, throughout the Bay Area, so it's City Council Members and, and Supervisors from all nine Bay Area counties, so.
Yeah, there's, there's interesting discussions here, you know, I mean, I, it's interesting to see a place like ours to have, you know, sort of pro-housing. And then you get municipalities in the Bay Area that are anti-housing. Um, and so there were heated discussions in there that happened, but there's also some really good discussions about the general health of the Bay Area. I actually kind of find it interesting every, every time I attend.
So you want to continue?
No, not really. I mean, I'm up to. I was trying to sell it, Mayor Washington.
You're happy to, happy to have someone else learn, yes.
Yeah. It's a trip to the city.
We're getting, yeah, all expenses paid.
Take the ferry.
All expenses paid trip to Oakland or San Francisco. Uh, Gen, I know generally Supervisor Ramos and others have been willing to carpool, so this is definitely a carpool opportunity.
Right, and so if Bailey Ramos is the ABAG President, um, and if Pierre gets on, he'll be the Executive Board Member, um, so you won't be alone.
Yeah, and actually, she gets free parking, I think, so.
Oh, yeah, she gets prime parking down there.
She usually drives and gets free parking, so it's, that's pretty simple.
You guys are really selling it.
They might even bring a pillow.
Yeah.
No, I'll go and bond her for that.
All right.
Right on, man. That's amazing.
Uh, yeah.
I like you already.
Is there, is there an alternate for that General Assembly?
I'll be the alternate.
All right.
Make that easy. And don't miss any meetings, though.
Uh, last two, they are different, despite the name convention and the address being the same and the same, uh, entities. North Bay Water Reuse Authority is a conglomerate of local governments in the North Bay that have pooled resources to try to get grant funding. Uh, we're currently evaluating our participation in that, because I don't know that we've gotten our bang for our buck in that.
I'm happy to stay on it, but I would agree. I think the first phase was a good deal, and we showed up in the second phase.
With the best of intentions.
Yeah, so I'm happy to stay on there, but I think the manager is right. It, it's, you know, not nearly as exciting as it was sold to me years ago by Supervisor Caldwell, who said, you gotta be on that committee. They've got millions of dollars. It's like.
Yeah.
That was true when he was on it. He hasn't been on it for a while, so, but happy to stay on.
All right, so we'll keep that one as is, and this next one is North Bay, uh, Watershed, which is.
I'll make it easy. I'll take it.
Okay, thank you. That one only has some appeal because they have some sort of relationship with Measure AA funding, for which we're trying to get things for the weather, the restorations, and Eco Center, and I don't nearly have enough of the details to sell you on it, but thank you for making my life easier, and, um, I got the notes, so I think.
I'll take it as that was our question and answer, so I'd like to open it up to, uh, public comment if there's any.
That's good.
See none out here. How about online, Madam Clerk?
There are no answers online.
Okay, if there's no public comment, I'd like to close this public comment and return to the council if they have any additional questions or statements about the committees. And if there is none, I'll accept a motion to accept item number six.
Yeah, if there's no other comments since we've gone through it, I'll make a motion, uh, that we approve the 2025 City Council Appointment List as edited.
I second that motion. Motion's been second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamontina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item is item seven, selection of the Napa County Representative on the Metropolitan Transit Commission, the MTC. Mr. Holly?
Yes, in, in retrospect, we probably could have covered this under the last item. We received a special request from the Napa County Clerk related to this, and I'm not exactly sure why, unless that clerk is the clerk for the City Select Committee.
I do.
Um, they had some sort of urgency around their request. So, again, this is a recommendation to the City Select Committee. There's a, a single appointment Napa County-wide that the City Select Committee sends to MTC, uh, to represent Napa County. Currently, that is Supervisor Pedrosa. He, uh, will be not in office as of January, and so a replacement is needed. The Metropolitan Transportation Commission is a massive, powerful organization, bigger than some countries' GDP, um, and it controls transportation funding in the San Francisco Bay Area, so. This is a key appointment, uh, and happy to answer any other questions, uh, that you all have.
Just for the viewers, G, GDP, the abbreviation stands for?
Gross Domestic Product, so they, um, they, they control a lot of money coming in and out of the Bay Area.
And I would just provide a little more context that, um, historically, the North Bay Counties, by our population, shouldn't be carrying a lot of weight. But we have remarkably, you know, punched above our weight in large part because we've had some good alliances with the North Bay, and right now, part of the composition of the MTC is that the ABAG President is automatically on there. So Supervisor Ramos from Napa County is automatically on the seat, plus one from Napa County, so that gives us two. So I think it's a golden opportunity, um, just because, as the manager said, MTC has a whole lot of money. They have in the past been able to finesse funding to get the widening of Jameson Canyon. They, Alfredo Pedrosa was very instrumental in securing funding for our own, um, multimodal project. So it really is an important job, and there's a whole lot of politicking and all that. Having said all that, um, I've also kind of taken the position that, or have been lobbied, um, that Supervisor-elect Liz Alessio is really looking to be the appointee from Napa County. She has been on NVTA, just finished up as chairperson. So I would like to support her, and I would make a motion to, that we appoint Liz Alessio to be, uh, the Napa's representative.
May I stop the motion until I have a further discussion, because I want some clarity on that, please? So. The county is asking us to recommend somebody countywide to sit on this?
Yes.
They're asking the City Council to put forth a recommendation to the City Select Committee of an elected official in Napa County, whether they be a City Councilperson or a County Board Supervisor, whether they be on the American Canyon City Council or any other City Council or Board Supervisors. There is no limit to that. They do have to be an elected official.
Yeah.
And they're asking for our nomination to that City Select Committee, who will then, um.
And I, I suppose they're doing this across all jurisdictions as well?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And then, do we have to have one? Could we have two?
I'm gonna read something that came directly from the county clerk. So, uh, "The Napa County City Selection Committee is seeking to fill an upcoming vacancy on the M, uh, Metropolitan Transportation Commission due to two new members joining the Board of Supervisors in January 2025. The unexpired term began on February 10, 2023, and ends on February 9, 2027. MTC is responsible for transportation planning and coordination across the nine K, Napa County, San Francisco Bay Area, Government Code 66503B. City Select Committee must submit a list of three nominees, chosen for their familiarity with transportation issues and dedication to regional challenges, to the Board of Supervisors, who will select the final appointee." Actually, that's really important to know. So it isn't actually the City Select Committee. They, they pick from, they pick from a list and then get it down to three, and it's actually the Board of Supervisors who pick from that three. Um, each city in town, um, is required to submit a nominee, a current mayor, councilmember, or Board of Supervisors member. By January 10, nominee must demonstrate expertise in transportation policies and issues. Uh, the council, uh, is asked to discuss and, if possible, approve a nominee during this, during this meeting, we're talking about tonight. Once approved, the nominee's name will submit to the City Select Committee for consideration, uh, and then the committee will recommend three candidates to the Board of Supervisors for a final appointment. So, um, someone with transportation expertise, must be an elected official, uh, goes to the City Select Committee, who whittles that list down, uh, and then the Board of Supervisors does their final thing, uh, picking from the final list of three.
So based on that, and you've had a conversation, and I'm assuming, Councilman Oro, that you have someone that you.
I've been lobbied too, left and right. I don't even know why I was being lobbied until this came up, and so, you know, Supervisor-elect Amber Manfree was also asking to be part of it. Um, and quite honestly, I've been ignoring it until recently and wanted to see how this played out, because I was confused. I thought we could actually nominate both as a city and then let them go figure it out as up there, and I was hoping, but if I hear correctly, it's a nominee.
In the past, this council has actually, uh, for the last time in 2023, we actually nominated Supervisor Pedrosa. It was our, it was the council's recommendation to the City Select Committee that, uh, that Supervisor Pedrosa, he was at the time the, uh, MTC representative to begin with from Napa County, and the recommendation was to City Select Committee to have him have another term. And so it doesn't have to be one of the council members, or it certainly can.
Uh, I guess with that, do you have anything that supports why we should support Manfree?
Uh, I, I'm actually thinking I need to have a conversation with both, honestly, um, because I, I didn't really have a conversation. I would encourage the rest of these council members to either talk to others, and, and I'd actually make a motion to just table this until the next meeting and make that decision, so that we can, to Councilmember Joseph's background, it is a very important position. And I appreciate Liz Alessio being on the chair. She's, she's now the vice chair, or?
She was vice chair for two years and then chair for two years.
Yeah, so she definitely has that experience, but I do want to have a conversation with a couple others and just kind of nail that down beforehand, and, and my, my, my motion would be just to table it until the next meeting, and we can quickly knock it out after that, um, just so I can have that conversation. You can also proceed with this vote. I'll probably get stamed.
Then my question to you is, is there a date that they, were they expecting?
January 10th.
January 10th.
We got one more meeting.
Yeah, so we procedurally, uh, happy to sort of table the motion for the moment and, uh, continue this matter until our December 17th meeting. Pending further evaluation and learning more about the process and what the responsibilities are and the interests and, and all of that. Makes, I mean, that, that's totally reasonable.
And Councilman Oro, I mean, Joseph, how, how strong are you with your motion?
Well, I, I agree that we have. Well, I agree that we have time, and if it's, you know, if everybody has a chance to discuss the options, I know that Supervisor-elect Alessio is definitely interested, and certainly meets the qualifications, so that's kind of who I'm leaning towards, but I think if we want to continue it to the 17th, so others can, now that we know the process and why people are calling us saying, "Please support me," now we have that context, it might be worth it to, you know, do a little investigating and come back with a better position.
That's fair.
I don't object to continuing it to the 17th.
Okay, I'd like to hear from Councilmember Lamatino and Councilmember Cruz, have you guys, either one of you been contacted by either?
I, personally, I have not been contacted by either Alessio or Manfree, but if there is no urgency to choose someone right away, I'm for tabling this discussion until our next meeting.
I have not been contacted, and I'm fine with, excuse me, tabling.
Okay. Nor have I, neither one have contacted me, so, I mean, I don't see any harm in tabling it. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Councilman Oro.
I knew there was a reason we kept this one separate.
There you have it.
We do need a motion to continue the item to December 17.
So moved.
I'll second.
Now that we have a second, can we get a vote?
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes, and I did realize I didn't open it up to public comment, so.
I think we're okay because we're continuing.
Thank you, yes. Next item, number eight, standard proclamations list for 2025, Mr. Hawley?
See, I think we're getting simpler as the night goes on, I hope. A new practice, actually, that we thought might be useful, because many of our proclamations, you know, they happen at the beginning of the meetings, and many of them are routine, annual in nature, and they come about in a particular month of the year, or a particular week of the year, et cetera, and so we thought, well geez, why don't we just show you all what the list is now, instead of getting questions or whatever, and we can have the council, you know, understand this list, bless this list, if there are changes during the year, happy to accommodate that. This is just a list of the ones we've historically done. We tend to be fairly accommodative of requests, assuming, you know, at face value, they're not controversial, and they're generally representative of our very diverse community, tend to try and be inclusive as we can. We also, on the flip side, try to be mindful of agenda management and time management, and three proclamations in a meeting, sort of our limit, which we can accommodate most months, May is already maxed out, we exceed that in May, because it's a very popular month for stuff. I would not suggest any additional proclamations in May, but if you had some, you know, certainly we can talk about it. We wanted to bring this list forward, so you guys had the awareness around what we're doing, and there's always the opportunity to add others, and I think that's all we had.
Thank you, Mr. Hawley. I looked at the list, I liked the list, but I'd like for you to add a person to the list, or a, I guess, a community piece to the list by popular demand. A lot of people have reached out to me about Meet Me in the Street, and how effective and how much the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce has contributed to the people of American Canyon getting out, and I would just like to ask if we could get Valerie Zizah, or, I can never say her last name, Morales Morris?
Maurice.
Maurice, added to that list.
Yeah, I would certainly second that, I've been lobbied as well. I think in June, right before the Meet Me in the Street series starts, it might make sense to have a proclamation just recognizing the Meet Me in the Street program. Certainly Valerie has been instrumental, but I'm kind of partial to institutionalizing it and saying we want to support the chambers program, and if we did it in June, the first June meeting, it would be timely.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm all right liking you as a Vice Mayor.
Hey.
So I heard two slightly different things, and I'll make sure that I'm totally clear. What I heard from Vice Mayor Joseph was, we want to add a, I'll call it standard proclamation in June, assuming Meet Me in the Street continues on a reoccurring basis, and the proclamation is around Meet Me in the Street, recognizing it, supporting it, importance to the community, and is not about the individual who played a large part in bringing that forward, and so that's, which would be a little unusual for us to annually recognize an individual, so.
Yeah.
And maybe what we do for the first one probably is recognize how all this got started and recognize the individual, the annual proclamation thereafter probably wouldn't recognize the individual every time, so we would make some adjustments on the annual one thereafter. That would be the approach we're thinking about, unless?
Yeah, that sounds like a better way of describing it than what I did, so.
And I guess I was looking at it as for, as the Chamber of Commerce as a whole, and they're led by a specific person, so I just wanted to make sure that specific person, it was that person's ideal that was developed into something that has really been impactful to our community.
Yeah, I actually like the way that Mr. Hawley described it, let's recognize the individual who happens to work at the chamber, and then annually Meet Me in the Street, and then it adds a little more significance-
Yeah.
-from the city to this important event that people have come to know and love.
Yes, I agree.
Sure.
And there are examples from the past, for example, when Relay for Life was an event that we had here, there would be a council proclamation around Relay for Life, and so there is, there are examples where we do more around a community event, for example, so.
Yeah.
Doing it around Meet Me in the Street with this first one, having a little more characterization of how it all came to be, and the parties involved, go from there.
I agree, I think Valerie deserves a lot of special recognition, at least in the initial cycle, and then thereafter, it's really the program that we're honoring, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
I told you we were getting easier as the night got on.
Yeah.
We do need a minute order, if there are not any other changes, although I don't know that we did public comment.
Yeah, we have not done public comment yet, so I'd like to allow, to open up for public comment.
Before we do that, do you have one correction to be made on that list? So in October, we typically celebrate Filipino-American Heritage Month, that's Filipino-American History Month, that's, we get that wrong every year, so let's correct that, please?
History, not heritage.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz, and we are open for open comment, public comment.
Beth Marcus, I just want to thank you for doing that for the Meet Me in the Street, because I think it's something that I obviously learned really well this year, but beings as I described it, she did it to get us to come out after COVID, you know, she got us all together, we were out in the community, everybody looks forward to it, and unless you've ever been involved in it, you just have no idea what goes into this Meet Me in the Street, and it's amazing, I never thought when we end at eight o'clock, by nine o'clock, nine thirty, no later, we're out of there, and the next day, you'd never know we were ever there. So I appreciate you doing that, and I just wanted to ask one other thing, in May, there's Older Americans Month, what is that? I've never heard of that one before, but I think, I think there's a few of us here that might be part of that.
Yeah, and I think we did a proclamation last year for that, and I'd be supportive of that, I think, who was it that came in here and wanted that, I'm forgetting, I think it was Ann, that came in and talked about that, that'd be a nice thing to have.
Yeah, that's, that's a nice, I just don't ever remember that.
It's already on there, yep.
It's in May, along with everything else, but.
Are there any other public comments online, Madam Clerk?
I have no hands raised online.
Okay, if there's no other public comment, I'd like to close public comment, return to the council if there's any additional questions, and if not, any statements, I'll accept a motion to accept item number eight.
I'll make a motion that we accept the proclamation list for 2025 as amended.
I'll second.
Thank you, motion's been second, roll call please.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes.
Next business item is number nine, 2025 City Council and Council Commission Meeting Calendar, Mr. Hawley?
Perhaps the easiest item this evening, generally established by the municipal code, you don't have a lot of choice here for your regular meeting calendar, you do have the option to call special meetings as you desire, so these are the first and third Tuesdays of each month, we've in the past taken off the first Tuesday of January and the first Tuesday of July, recognizing that many people are traveling and doing things around New Year's, and same thing with Fourth of July, so that's why those dates are not in here, and we do also note an anticipated joint meeting with PCS and OSATs in June, that's been a practice we've established as far as their annual work plans, that would be the second meeting in June, your regular date is just a special meeting. What's not shown in here would be a special meeting with Planning Commission, it's on our radar to have, the date, I would call it, is still uncertain, but definitely a need, we just haven't figured out what date is going to make sense for that, and also in the packet are the commissions themselves, and their scheduled dates and their meetings, so if the council has any questions, I'm happy to answer that.
Any questions from the council?
Not relative to what's there, but one other item that we discussed is trying to get our calendars out to pick a annual board council retreat sometime in January, February.
Thank you for bringing that up, Vice Mayor Joseph, I slipped my mind. A special meeting, I'm of the perspective, I think the council's of the perspective, that a strategic planning session with the council and staff and myself would be a good idea, and so as city staff, we're getting together on Friday, January 24, and we're thinking it would be a good time after that to get together with the council. One other thing that we have on tap, if you will, we're thinking about is a variation on our State of the City Roadshow, we've taken our State of the City out in different environments, and we had felt like we could do a version of the State of the City Roadshow here at City Hall in a sort of a Meet Me, not Meet Me in the Street, a Meet Me at City Hall kind of format, so probably the second meeting in February, the 18th, is what we have targeted, we would hold, technically it'd be a meeting, because you're all going to be here, but we would have kind of an open house, kind of a meet your new council, you know, discussion concept, we envision bringing food and other activities for folks here, and hopefully we can host it outside, if the weather isn't permitting, we can do it in our new HR training annex downstairs, and again, providing food refreshments for folks in an open house sort of meet your new council style, we target that for February 18th, so the first question, I want to just kind of share that with you, and, you know, hoping you guys are okay with that concept, and the next question would be whether we try to squeeze that strategic planning session in with the council, ahead of that, after the, between January 24th and February 18th, might be a little of a tight fit, it may be something better to do after February 18th, if you're okay with using February 18th for that, you know, meet your new council, open house. Like I said, January 24th, that Friday, is when staff is getting together with our consultants, we're doing our kind of a management retreat, so maybe the first part of March might be a good opportunity, but, I mean, we're open to what you all have in your calendars and schedules and all of that.
If I recall, Vice Mayor Joseph, you mentioned not only the workshop, but you wanted to have an additional meeting where the council kind of ran it ourselves, so we kind of, one get to know one another better?
Yes.
And it's something that we ran.
I think depending, you know, the date notwithstanding, the subject matter, I think, ought to include a little more team building than we've done in the past, because we've got a new team, and so I think we need time for that. I also think that it's worthwhile to maybe focus a little more on, you know, we have our eight goals, but within those goals, what kind of specific projects and priorities we want to consider, again, because we're a new team, and then probably have some time in there where we can sit down in closed session, a closed session component, to kind of have a one-on-one with the city manager, you know, just the six of us, because, you know, there are a lot of things floating out there, and I mentioned in my experience as a city manager, after about seven or eight years, there's a real point in which there's a lot of things, projects you've taken on that aren't done, new projects that get put on you, day-to-day headaches, everything, so it might be a good time, especially with the new council, to have a chunk of that retreat time, just to kind of have a candid discussion of, you know, what's going on, because we're inclined to say, "I just want to add one more thing," and that seems to make sense until you're the person accumulating the one more things, so, you know, I just think that this retreat ought to be considered a little differently than prior ones, even to the point of saying, "Should it be a two-day retreat?" Because there really are some topics that may not normally be critical, but I think might be critical this time around.
And I agree with you too, Vice Mayor Joseph, because I think it sets up our city manager for success as well.
Yeah.
When we could, the five of us can get together, and although we may all have five different priorities, we can find out amongst ourselves whether, which one of those five priorities that we individually have, and we could present, instead of 25 different priorities to you, Mr. Hawley, come down with five true priorities for the city to be able to evaluate, you know, how you're doing during that year, a little bit more realistically, so I think that's important, so, thank you, Vice Mayor Joseph.
How is the end of the first week of March looking for people's calendar? Do we know yet, travel, break, spring break, I know it's not spring break.
Can we send out a doodle? I'm like, I got to plan my year for that, I was expecting early February when we did it last year, at that time, right, the sooner the better, March seems kind of late to me. I know, I got multiple kids all over the place right now, and there's different spring breaks, I don't know what's happening, I just need to look at the calendar, and if we can get a, we could do this offline and can-
Sure, probably.
Time to meet.
That'd be helpful.
Yes, we'll send out some calendaring, and we'll get it on people's schedule.
Yeah, perfect, thank you.
If no more questions or statements from council, I'd like to open up to public comment, if there's any. If there's no public comment, I'd like to close public comment and return to the council if there's additional questions, if any. If there's no statement, I will accept a motion to accept item number nine.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the council and commission meeting calendars.
I'll second. We have a second, can we get a, roll call please?
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes.
And now we're at the part of the management and staff oral reports.
Yes, Director Keita has some updates for us.
Good evening, I'm here to tell you all the wonderful things that are happening here in American Canyon over the next couple weeks. This Friday, we have our very own magic of the season at Shenandoah Park, it's going to be from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. This is in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, and we're going to be having our business community provide a holiday marketplace, we're going to have yummy treats, lots of holiday festivities, and community performances, and the tree lighting at 6:30 p.m. You'll all be receiving a formal invitation of, to be able to participate, we hope to see you all there, and it's going to be a great fun-filled evening with our community. On December 7th, we have quite a few activities, so buckle up tight, I'm going to go through them as quickly as I can, so December 7th, we have ACCPF will be hosting their annual reindeer run, you heard from Janelle Selig already this evening that they're still accepting registration, so if you are interested in participating in their 5K or 10K, don't forget to register, it's a great event, it's at Wetlands Edge, you get to experience our very own beautiful open space. And then also that day, Kiwanis is hosting Adopt a Family, donations will be accepted to support families in need, please contact them directly to participate. Also that day, we have a free paper shredding event provided by Recology located here at City Hall from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And then Family Worship Center will present their Christmas sing-along at 4:00 p.m. at the Family Worship Center in American Canyon, and then lastly, that day is the Parole Lantern Festival and Competition from 4:30 to 7:30 p.m., brought to you by the American Canyon Arts Foundation, Phil Am of American Canyon, and Napa County. brought to you by the American Canyon Arts Foundation, Phil Am of American Canyon, and Napa County. And then on Sunday, December eighth, the Doubletree will be hosting a Breakfast with Santa from eight AM to ten AM. On December eleventh, Tractor Supply will be hosting a Holiday Mini Market from three PM to seven PM. On December twelfth, the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a Market and Mingle at RD Winery from four to seven PM. And then on December fourteenth, please join the American Canyon Parks and Recreation Department at Wetlands Edge to learn about fungi from nine AM to twelve PM. Also that day, we will be hosting a Donuts with Santa at the Adult Activities Center from ten AM to twelve PM. And then lastly, on December seventeenth, we will be bringing back our annual I Spy Snowman Hunt. Register at americancanon.gov if you'd like to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. Now we're ready for our mayor and council comments and committee reports, and we'll start with you, Councilmember Cruz. Anything to report?
I have nothing to report, but again, I'm excited to work with all of you guys, and everyone here with staff, with the mayor, vice mayor, and my council folks. Thank you very much, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. Councilmember Lapatina?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Oro?
Uh, nothing to report, but I will have some future agenda items.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Joseph?
Nothing really to report, other than I was meaning, I, years ago, I had a little character drawing of Leon Garcia and myself. And I meant to track it down and make a copy and frame it for Leon, and I blew it, so trust me, it's a really cute cartoon. Comes from the exciting days in two thousand and five. So I'll track it down and get it to him, but.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
One of those kind of comments.
For me, I just want to congratulate the American Canyon High School football team for being the champs that they are in our city. You know, it's really exciting. I also want to wish our city manager a very happy birthday. We're almost twins. His birthday is today, my birthday is tomorrow. I, I want to apologize, because I've already gave, given the vice mayor a job to do for me on my behalf this week, because I'm leaving for a birthday vacation with my wife, so I won't be able to make the, the tree lighting. So I've asked Vice Mayor Joseph to attend for me, and he said he would graciously, so thank you. I also got a lot of calls asking me if Councilmember Oro and I are still friends. I want everybody to know that we are very much so friends, and the only time you'll see us fighting is when the Eagles and the Forty Niners are playing. With that said, I'd like to go into future agenda items.
Thank you. So as you, as some of you know, I did do a presentation at the League of California Cities event in Long Beach on AI policy, and I've been talking about it, and I've been pushing it, and I've seen some cities adopt it, and then yesterday I was actually, this is why I canceled my meeting yesterday, Jason. It was, I was doing a training for the county of Sonoma. So there are thirty people in the room there, me and the people that presented. We presented on how local government can work with AI and battle misinformation. And we presented that to them, a training, a two-hour training. We walked them through that. And the county of Sonoma has an AI policy. Several cities have an AI policy. And I said, if I'm going to go up here and do trainings, I better get my city to do an AI policy. I've got everything you need, Jason, and for staff, and so I would like to bring that forward to the council at some time. AI is a tool that we ought to be using. And as we end in our training, you know, AI won't replace you, but somebody with AI skills will. So it'll be, if we could bring that forward, you know, something close to me, dear to my heart, I've written an article about it, spoke about it. I think it'd be an easy thing for us to adopt sometime in the first quarter.
Thank you, Councilmember Oro.
That's one.
Looking forward to it.
That's one. I'm just hoping that we can bring that to the agenda item, and I think you have to, I have to get a second or something like that, too.
Yeah, we generally require a second and a, and a vote of, of the council.
Yeah, I, I would be happy to second that, because I'm curious to see how you can battle misinformation, whether it's with AI or just telling people to read three articles before you commit, but I, I, I think we would need to do this.
Thank you. We have a second? Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
I'm looking forward to it, yes.
And then the second of the future item is something that came up in the last council meeting. A labor representative has been reaching out to me. Alicia from the sheet metal workers was talking about community benefits programs. And, you know, I, I think there was, at the time of that council meeting, there was a, a feeling of an attack for some of the developers in town. But I don't think it was aimed at that. I think we have a project in town, a hotel that's been sitting there for a very long time, that probably could have used the community benefits program. What's the name of that hotel on Broadway right now that's being built?
The Home to Suites.
Home to Suites, right? They aren't using local labor, and we know that's been trouble. And I would like to just at least bring forward this community develop benefits program, have an understanding of it, and then maybe discuss how we may incorporate that in our policies, just so that we can get some projects done faster.
I, I would agree. I think my understanding of community benefits is more than just making sure we, we hire, you know, good labor. I think it's also a recognition that, you know, when the council makes a decision, you know, as we rezone properties or approve entitlements, that creates value for the property owner. And part of the concept, well, may not be legal, but part of the concept is if we're going to give you that kind of wealth, then it might be appropriate to say the community is entitled to some value, particularly since some of that development's going to cost quality life. You know, we hear it all the time. Anytime you approve a housing project, everybody says, yeah, it's going to make traffic worse, so. My idea of community benefit is that recognition that we're giving you something, you've got to give the community something to compensate for the quality of life.
Yeah, yeah, and I'd just like to understand that more.
Yeah, yeah, I think the.
And like, I mean, Home to Suites is a great example. It's been sitting there for a very long time. It's almost an eyesore now, and it actually is an eyesore. It's been a very long time, and a lot of things have been built in that timeframe. And, and we hear a lot of things, but, you know, if this can help with that, I'd like to understand that.
Yeah.
Bring that forward. I wouldn't mind if a labor representative came in and helped us educate that. Wouldn't mind if a developer came in and helped us educate, and then we can figure out how to adopt it or not in the near future.
No, I, I agree. I think it's something we need to learn more about. Just because I have an opinion of what it is doesn't mean that's what it is. It just means I have an opinion, so.
I agree. I agree with that as well, and I think that, uh, we did it once last year with the developers. I thought that was a really good meeting that we had. We had the meeting of the minds, if you will. I think the same thing with the labor groups. If they could come and do a nice presentation for us to kind of educate us on the benefits of what American Canyon gets out of that, I think that'd be important, so. It's that's something that you, we need to have a.
Yeah, we would.
So I'll make a motion to bring forward a community benefits program educational discussion in the, in the near term, in the near future, as a, uh, agenda item.
All right. Can I get a second?
Go ahead. I'll second that motion.
We have a second? Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes.
Just to be clear on that, the approach that we'll be using for that will be to bring in someone who does these benefit agreements, you know, that's, I'm not going to go off and try to learn about them and present a sort of
Yeah, it would like.
Neutral version of what I've learned. It's going to be, I'll bring in someone, they're going to provide their educational perspective. Probably going to have to have a second session where the folks who have their version of those stories will come. Rather than bringing both groups together to sort of have a clash of opinions, that these, these are definitely not going to be neutral in sort of passion and interest, so the idea will be to bring in someone, does these for a living, they can educate us, and then you can talk to, we can bring in some other groups and have them explain their perspectives.
Okay, good. Thank you. Well, it looks like we've finished our business for today. For an open session, we still have to adjourn for closed session. Just want to say it's been a pleasure, it's been an experience, and I'm glad I'm here, and good night, American Canyon. We have finished our business for today. We are adjourned.
Good work.